It's a pleasure coming home. It's been thirty-four wonderful years here. It's great. And out of those thirty-four years, when I arrived at, in 1973, Luz was in second grade, first grade. And I had the privilege with her mother and father to assist in raising their kids. Because they, we always said, right, Ms. Jamie? They were our kids, right?
Yes.
And they all grew up, they all were in Belmar. Mr. and Mrs. Jamie were always supporters. Their kids always did, were wonderful students, always focused, always knew what they were going to do. And that was because of their parents. They did a great job. Luz, you know, she is something, she was special. You have to realize that Luz was one, and her brothers and sisters were the others. The Jamie family were the only Hispanic family in Belmar for a good ten, twenty, ten years. And then the Sylvia families moved in. And they had a few children that came here as well. But that was it. And Luz was able to take what her parents had taught her, what we had, what our great teachers had taught her. And she went through Belmar, went to Mavascon, Georgian Court. And I always told her, when you graduate, you'll have a job. And I kept that promise. And Luz was one of the first in this area as an ESL teacher. And the one thing that the Jamie family always did is they kept their native language. They were always, they, so it was a natural. Because although we didn't have many non-English speaking children, Luz was able to communicate with them. And she was able to work with them. And sometimes she had the United Nations in that class. It wasn't just Spanish. We had, we had some Chinese once, Russian kids. We had, we had a lot of different kids come in. Didn't stay alone, but Luz was there for those students, and she did an remarkable job. It's hard to believe, I'm still working and she's retired. And she's probably gonna stay retired. Where I, if it wasn't for me. Luz, it's wonderful. And I wish you a lot of happiness in your retirement. You're gonna be surely missed here at the school. You are an institution. Mr. Alvarez is right when he says, you probably spent more time in here than I did, you know? And as a kid and growing up. So, again, congratulations. And I'm so happy that your mother was here to see this event and your family. And I just wish you all the happiness in the world. And a long retirement. Very good, thank you.
So, like every school, we have certificates for everything. So we made you a certificate for retirement. You don't have to put it on the wall, but you have to get one. I'll ask Luz to say a few words.
I didn't write anything down. And it's kind of bittersweet leaving, you know, personal reasons why I am retired at this point. I have spent every year since I was four years old, besides high school and a year and a half that I worked elsewhere. During college, I still do my practice in Sierra. This has always been home for me. The staff, you guys know, all my family. And I will miss every one of you. Dr. Richens and my mom, thank you. We continue the opportunity and push to continue. There were times when I worked in a different district. I worked in Jersey City, and I would call my mom crying because it was so bad. And I didn't want to teach anymore. So if it wasn't for you, I wouldn't have continued this far. And if it wasn't for you, I wouldn't have the job and I wouldn't have been able to come back home. And Mrs. Scullion, when she ever hears about this, she's my favorite teacher ever. So I'm enjoying the rise of retirement with her. Thank you, everybody, thank you.
Can I get a picture for the ghost star?
Sure, if it doesn't...
I don't know, I'm into witness protection.
Big smiles. Thank you so much.
So, there's another person here we all want to honor as well. For my first days here, which wasn't that long ago, it was clear to me that this is a community of people that truly care for the students that walk through here every day. This person has dedicated her career to working with our youngest and most often vulnerable students, those that need care and love more than anybody else. Joanne Stewart has offered that. Her years of dedication to these kids will not be forgotten, not by those kids and not by us. We thank you for your commitment and dedication. After Dr. Richens says a couple of things, I'll ask her.
Well, now, Joanne Stewart. We first met when she was a parent. And she used to, she had two lovely children. And her little girl and I, you know, we got along fine. And she used to tell me, stop, you know, you're spoiling her. Remember, you used to tell me that. Because she sometimes would get a little melancholy. And I'd take care of her. She's, you know, she has to grow up. And I said, okay, girl. But then she got interested in becoming a parent professional. And so I hired her. The board hired her, I recommended. And she found a home here, and she did a great job. And one of the things that Joanne did, which was new at the time, now it's very common, was the ABA. And the, if you know nothing, if you haven't heard of that, ABA is a type of therapy that's used with autistic children. And this goes back, I don't know, a long time. And she was one of the first that, you know, I said, are you interested? She went, yeah, okay. She volunteered, went for the training. And she started working with, at that time, our autistic children in that program. Did an outstanding job. And she worked with the preschool handicapped children as well as some of the older children that would need that. Very wonderful person. Her mother and father, may they rest in peace, they were great people. Father was about my size with glasses and a good scotchman, you know, but... And mother was a delightful lady. Dedicated mother, dedicated to her students, dedicated to the town of Belmar. She's gonna be missed also, Mr. Alvarez, because she did an outstanding job. And I wish you well in your retirement and a long one. And happiness.
You also get a certificate for retirement.
Like, really, I don't like this. Well, they are gonna find me now.
Big smiles. Perfect, thank you so much.
Would Joanne, if you'd like to say a word?
Yes. Yes, this crazy guy hired me. And I just thought, oh, I used to be a nurse. And I thought, oh, I'll try something different. I'll try being a power, you know? And here I am, almost thirty years later. And it was just Belmar, just the staff, the teachers. I've made lifelong friends here. My children went to school here, got a wonderful education. It was just, you were family. Like, everybody was family, everybody knew each other and took care, you know, everybody could help everybody else out. We did it. And it was just, this was like my home away from home. It was, it was great. I enjoyed every minute of it. I'd met amazing children. I'd made so many friends. And it's just, it's been wonderful and it was great. There we go.
She watched my son years ago, and I thought that would throw her into retirement. And again, you were like, angel.
No, it was, it was just, it's been a great ride. And it's gonna be very weird not coming here in September. But it'll be good. Thank you so much.
And so, unless you couldn't make it, I wanted to acknowledge Gina Burns for the love and the heart and the work ethic she brings to the EES every day. We are proud of what she does with birth. Our three and four-year-old, our really young kids. And she really does care for them as if they were her own. And looks after their needs, to be sure that they have everything they need to have a good shot at a great education here at the EES. So I just wanted to thank Gina for all of her time and her effort and wish her a happy retirement.
Thank you, Dr. Richens, for bracing us with your presence. We're gonna move on to the meeting, but I understand that all of you don't wish to stay.
We don't want to do this.
I don't know how many hundreds of these I lost. It's your show now.
Thank you.
So we're really excited about that. Our spring art show and concert was a huge success. See pictures of it, there's a spring concert, we're glad. Was really great. Our Matthew and Elaine night, run by Kathy and Anna Brusasi. Kathy Kenny, who did it was excellent. Our Connor Rum was a blast. That was by BTO, who was there. Spring around the field, getting spring with color. He was really cool. We did purchase buses for UES, BES. And they are, you'll see it on the slide, you probably have it behind me. But, so they've got their lettering on them. They're gonna be delivered to us after a couple more inspections and a few more things have to get done. But you'll see them on the picture. So hopefully next board meeting, I'll park that front so you guys can see it and check them out. Good. Tennis program had their exhibition versus St. Rose yesterday, which is really great. And then our fishing club hit the inlet today over by the, by the bridge. And one of our students, you didn't see it, it's one of the first slides, Max Fortman caught like a huge, like a really big fluke, like legit. Like you could, it was a keeper. And it was like, yeah. And I had to leave to get ready for this. But I was there for a little while to get them going, and they're really having a great time. Field day is this Friday, and our trip to Woodlock's next week, so that's really exciting. Our garden club's been filling our garden. And they're getting going, and things are really starting to grow. And that's it. I wish everybody have fun, fill them early weekend. Don't move your car. Take a look.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes and regular and executive meeting from April 2022? Mr. Chuck? Any questions or corrections? Call call, please.
Mrs. Olmec?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuck?
Yes.
Mr. Conkle?
Yes.
Mrs. Herbert?
Epstein.
Mrs. Lomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Nikle?
Epstein.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Mrs. Cartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Adams?
Yes.
Okay, personnel items?
Personnel items, just to approve Anna Brusasi and Kathy Kenny. We approved these teachers in charge in the event that the administrator is absent. That doesn't happen, it hasn't happened. But in the case that, for whatever reason, I'm out and the other two administrators are out, I want somebody to be a teacher in charge, just to make sure things run okay. And then conference with somebody. Either both of them are both capable to do that. We have a king student to complete 1,200 hours with school psychology internship with our CST team. To approve Judy Morgan as a full-time ESL teacher to replace Luz or Chuck. She's currently an individualist with us. She does an excellent job. She teaches math here. But she'd be moving into that ESL program. She's certified for that. So we're very lucky to have somebody else that has the certified who wants to get that job. So I'm very happy about that. Secretaries for rehire for 2023-24. Parent professionals, the facility staff for rehire for 2023-24. And then a contract for Michael Barnesley for 2023-24. Have the summer hour for technology approved for 2023-24. And Ryan Lasky is approved as facilities manager with anticipated start in June with a salary of $6,7,500 from, you know, July 1st to June 24th, 2024. With a prorated daily rate for days served before July 1st. So anytime you have somebody transitioning out of a position that there's only one of, you want them to work with the person who's leaving. So there's gonna be an opportunity for Mr. Lasky to come in to work with Mr. Marsh. Me and Mr. Barnesley and Mr. Marsh. Interviewed quite a few people, looked for most qualified candidates that fit. You know, there were people we called, and they're like, well, you know, maybe it's not the right fit for me. And then people that we interviewed that we felt like were close. But there was a few candidates, and Ryan Lasky was, in our estimation, the best fit for Belmar. He's a really genuine guy. I think he'll do a really excellent job. He currently works nights right now. He wasn't able to make this meeting, but I think he wants to come to the next one. He has a few people out, and so his skeleton proof where he's at, so he wasn't able to make it. So we offer apologies. But he will want to meet everybody. Really genuine guy, I think he's gonna be a really good fit for Belmar. It's sad to see Justin go, but, you know, we move on. And I think he's gonna be able to do the job really well.
Can someone move the personnel items? Any questions or comments? Call call, please.
Mrs. Olmec?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuck?
Yes.
Mr. Conkle?
Yes.
Mrs. Herbert?
Yes.
Mrs. Lomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Nikle?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Mrs. Cartier? And Mrs. Adams?
Yes.
Education operations items?
All right, so you'll see physical therapy service contract for next year. Submission for a comprehensive equity plan, which is something that we have to submit every year. State offered an extension, so we're gonna use that. Travel professional development. Updated field trips and field trip spreadsheet. As approved now, in that's field trips, the fishing club is gonna go on a boat. One of our charter boats here in Belmar. The Captain Cal, no, the captain is Captain Ron. So we've been in contact with him. He's gonna get the, get all the tackle ready for us. We're gonna be taking a bunch of kids out on a boat.
Have to release a sign.
Uh huh. You might think they'll release a sign. But, so this is kind of a unique field trip. Well, there's quite a few kids in the fishing club. So we're gonna see how many of them are gonna actually go in, gonna be going on the trip.
How many are in the fishing club?
There's probably 25, the 30 kids in the club. You know, I've gone to meetings where there's 25, 30 kids there. Today, I wanna say we had probably 16, 17 kids fishing on the inlet. So it's gonna, you know, at those numbers, what percentage of them are gonna find out that, hey, boats are not my thing? I don't know. So we're gonna bring a couple buckets. Do they might jump boards for us? I don't know, but we're gonna find out. If they're bold enough, they wanna do it. This is a, this is a right of passage in Belmar, as far as I see it. Like, you know, get on a boat, let's get out there, see if we can catch a fluke. Or whatever's running, might be blues, who knows? And we'll get them out there. I'm gonna be on the boat with them. Mr. Pedersen, we have a few other brilliant teachers.
Have you tested it out yet?
I have. I used to come here as a kid. And, you know, I used to take Lieutenant Belmar in point quite often. So, yeah, I think I'm gonna be all right. I'll give them the hints. Eyes on the horizon, don't look at the bubbles. You know, all the good stuff. We'll see what happens. I get the feeling I'm gonna be on puke duty. And then master teacher shared service agreement with Madeline Aberdeen, which is a continuation of a career we had last year, which we have this one person where for one day a week, they take four days a week, and we split the cost. Because we're a small district, we don't need a lead teacher for a 3K one day a week. Renee Will, which is excellent.
Okay, can somebody move the education operations items? Herbert, Mrs. Chuck? Any comments or questions?
What is the master teacher? I don't understand the job.
Every preschool program, when you're funded by the state, you need to have a master teacher. That's a sign that isn't a current teacher in your program. And so it's, it's a leadership position by a teacher, never any will, and serve that for us and a couple of additional for four part-time. But last year, we were coached by Madeline Aberdeen. They wanted her full-time. But they were gracious enough to extend and say, hey, listen, we'll take her for four if you wanna keep her for the one. And we're like, yes, please, we'd love to keep her for the one.
Does she work with you?
She works with our teachers.
Oh, with teachers?
Yeah, so she's a, she serves as a professional development kind of specialist that works with the teachers. Pushes it to their classrooms. She fish bowls and turnkeys, professional development. Keeps everybody up to speed on what's the best practice and how do we do that for our students. Yeah, every program that's state-funded has to have one. Because we only have four classes, we don't need a full-time person. We just need it one day a week.
Cool.
And so we were able to keep her. She's really excellent. Too professional.
Any other questions? Call call, please.
Mrs. Olmec?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuck? Mr. Conkle?
Yes.
Mrs. Herbert?
Yes.
Mrs. Lomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Nikle?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Mrs. Cartier?
Yes.
And Mrs. Adams?
Yes.
Finance items?
All right, so underneath the finance items, we have the monthly certification for April 30th, 2023. Budgetary line items were overspent. For the resolutions, we have the bills for the month of May for $1.3 million. We have the board secretaries and treasuries report for the month of April. We have the monthly transfer report and the budget transfer report for the month of April. And then number five, the monthly board certification for the board secretary and treasury reports.
Can someone move the finance items? Lomas, any comments or questions? Call call, please.
Mrs. Olmec?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuck? Mr. Conkle?
Yes.
Mrs. Herbert?
Yes.
Mrs. Lomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Nikle?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Mrs. Cartier?
Yes.
And Mrs. Adams?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know, by the way. I was trying, I forgot, we're not.
I keep it on the agenda.
Does anyone have any?
Just in case if anybody wants to say.
Yeah.
I know the boys played last night lacrosse, because we were at the girls championship. Did the boys win anyway, though?
They lost. Baseball team won.
They did, okay. Yeah, the Madison Square Lacrosse boys played Rumsen Varian.
But they lost.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, no, we'll just keep it on. I forgot that we weren't on, but we'll just keep it on in case anybody knows. If I go to my other meeting before this, I usually would have something to say, but didn't, that person was absent. Any communications? Any old business, anybody? Thought you were raising your hands, but...
Did any of you have an address code? Did we ever make any changes, updates to the address code?
I know that they addressed the student handbook, and it was updated this year.
It was?
Yeah, pretty sure. Yeah, we talked about this.
Did they take out spaghetti shirts?
I don't know. I know that they, I know that they met with the students, and they actually met with a representative group of students.
Remember you saying that that was gonna happen, and there was no follow-up? We didn't hear follow-up, I'm sure it happened.
Okay, I'll follow up. No, because I know that they met, we made changes.
I mean, I estimate so.
I just don't know, maybe, maybe we didn't send out like a public notice that there were changes. All right.
Were there changes where now you have to wear full pod, sweaters?
No, I know that we'll met, we'll met with a representative group and met with the school council.
You said that was gonna happen that week, and then...
And then I guess we just had a nice meeting, but they did meet.
I'm sure, I'm sure there were changes.
Yeah.
I'm sure all this happened.
It will be on next month's old business.
It will be on old business. Dress code. Spaghetti.
We've been talking about spaghetti straps for years.
Oh, yes. Years, I know. Spaghetti. Everybody likes spaghetti in Belmar. I mean, I do too.
Are it's posh, posh straps.
I have nothing, I have no idea. We'll find out. I'll look into the spaghetti straps.
Wall high school, band sweatpants this year. Wall high school. And sweatpants.
What would I like to find?
That's all my awares.
Blue pajama pants this year.
I think pajama pants.
But also sweat, they can wear stretch shirts.
I'm not sure what those are.
Those are all they wear. Julie wakes up and goes right out the door.
Any new business?
Yeah, I know.
So I just...
Oh, that's old business.
So I just wanna talk about the signs, because like, now that Mr. Marsh is kind of leaving us, I just wanna kind of bring up, back up our old topic. I know we were talking about it with the facility committee, and kind of wanna just pass these along to kind of get some ideas. And there is a big poster too. I'll put it on the front of the screen. So here's the... This is just a larger version of those. Just so everybody can see. So I kinda wanna get ideas from everybody, just to see like...
Does the score in front?
Of, in front of our building. It should be the Board of Education on it. There's, there's all these various, right? So I've seen the old sign where it says, Belmar. I'll mention, right, like, all the way up. The, the overhand in front of the door. We were thinking about putting the sign in, like, the garden bed area.
Above the door, but that's not even...
But, so...
Because everybody looks there.
But the only thing is, with these signs, these are quite big. So I think it would have to be, I could send out the picture that we've seen. Yeah, it's just literally small. Yep. So we could look at that as well. But I kinda wanted to just kind of have quick talks about it. We don't have to, like, need to...
Did we make changes? Like, the last time, we talked about taking the Belmar icon and putting it in the top, and then just the board would have that one? Did, like, did we make any changes?
So we...
They're like this, like it looks like it's off send, like this.
So you wanna move this to here?
That's what, yeah, that's what we said in the meeting, it was dedicated, did anything?
So we didn't, we didn't, nothing happened since then, just someone because of the fact that, I think, everything going on. So that's the reason why I wanted to kind of bring this back up to see what you guys thought about it. I mean, if you guys wanna do that, we could actually probably do it.
This is a really big sign, 96 is about the sign of the couch. So I don't know if we wanna go that big, I mean, we can go that big.
Depends where it's gonna go.
Where are we?
Is it wood?
It's like a composite material.
Is anything raised or it's all flat and printed?
No, I think it's, I think it's intact.
Where's the location?
Well, that's what we'll have to decide, right? That's what we can discuss. You know, we can put it in front of one of the small bushes by the front of the school, we can put it in the open lawn area, which means you have to cut around it. For me, I like, I like it being in garden beds because, you know, then you're just mulching around it and you're not, you know, usually the posts always get beat up by the weed whackers.
But you, you mean on the side?
I don't know.
Like is there no opportunity to have like wooden letters like above the door?
So that's the whole sign, and we literally have it, we have like a very old sign up in the attic.
The letters that would go over the door?
I believe it is.
That's your store as a people?
Let's go take a look at it. Before, before it becomes like 95 and like 120 degrees. This week, we're gonna take a look at it.
That's the new person's first assignment.
That's it. You are, to refurbish this sign is to test your ability, your working ability and craftsmanship. If it looks bad, I'll tell the board it was yours.
How about we have the new person put down the bricks?
The bricks are down.
The bricks are down.
They are down.
So the bricks are down, I sent the picture to Virginia this week. And so there, what they did is gave us placeholder bricks that are the exact same size. And so you can take a look at the bricks that are there. And if there's any that you wanna sell, we just replaced the placeholder ones with the ones that are there. Cause there's a couple of large ones and some smaller ones. So if you go out there, they're gonna look like, hey, those bricks don't match, they're just placeholders.
Beautiful, so I can like.
Take a walk back there and we'll take a look at this, I can even send two.
Okay, awesome. Right, does Virginia?
I should have put them on the slideshow.
That's all right. Just, she does, woman emailed us again. And we're still on old business?
What's that?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, we'll, we'll take, we'll evaluate what's upstairs and then see if there's a more classic streamlined, you know, sign that's up there or something that we, that we feel like makes sense. I mean, for this, for, for the board office, it's more of a side street, it's not, it's hard, but the front of the building matters, so we should be there.
I think I have a full business here, I'll be ready for our next question.
I know, that's.
Okay. Just up on, I'm not an eighth grade mom, but just on behalf of the eighth grade moms. I know we discussed that, I think Brian brought it up a few months ago. I know that they only wanna do the, the pictures for the high school seniors. Is, is it, is it out of the question to do it for the eighth grader graduating class?
I think the town is the one that's coordinating that. The borough, the Belmar borough is coordinating that, because the Lake Como borough was the one that was coordinating for the high school. So the only thing that we have is, you know, school pictures that we can release if, you know, the families want, want them to be released or whatever. So we, we're not.
So it doesn't have to do with us, but if I, if I brought it to the town?
Yeah, that's who you'd have to bring it to.
Thank you.
Any other old business?
You know, I, I do think there is one item, I don't, I don't know if I got taken care of, I think there's a brick that still needs to get put in.
No, that's what we were just saying, it got put in.
Yeah, it got put in, I sent an email to Virginia this week and she's like, yes, thank you. I hear a lot about this brick. It's in, right?
Explaining emails that sound like a weekly basis.
We got, yeah, I got the text message from her and I sent, sent this back, she was very happy. And like I said, the colors on some of the bricks is off because those are just placeholders. Once we fill them in, then.
So we gotta keep selling bricks?
Yeah, but just know how many to sell, don't sell one over, cause they were gonna figure out what to do with one brick.
Gotcha, 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 I'll find out.
All right.
I have some old business here.
Yes.
So the turn, you, in the beginning of the year, said there was like this major culture that you wanted to change with teachers. That you had identified certain teachers to change the culture, you sent them on a PD to California?
No, we went to Charlotte.
Bonn, yes, right next to it, there you go. So you went somewhere, how did it work out?
Great, yeah, they, it's part of actually the, our goal and it worked out great. We have a guiding coalition of teachers who helped start the professional development on, on September 1 last year, our first day.
Right.
And they've been a driving force throughout the school and, and helping PLTs, Belmar learning teams work together, collaborate. We created schedules that help them collaborate every week for 40 minutes. Where, you know, that kind of collaboration wasn't really happening on a regular basis. If we want teachers to grow professionally, we have to give them the opportunity to do that. So we were able to manipulate our schedule a little bit to make that work, they've been really helpful. You know, we had approved again another trip this summer to Syracuse and taking another group of people.
New group?
A new group. Ms. Vasili is gonna be joining and one of the other teachers who was one of our leads is also joining, but then the rest of the people are all new to this. And we're trying to, this is not gonna be something I can do every single year, but to jumpstart a program like this and a philosophy change like this, it requires, you know, that kind of buy-in.
Right, so you think you.
Oh, yeah.
Did?
Oh, yeah, it's moving already. Well, this is the thing, it takes, it takes a few years, but a good number of people recognize the good work we're doing and they're on board. You know, just like any team, anytime you have a team of people, you know, there's varying levels of buy-in and kind of like, ah, skepticism. Yeah, I've kinda seen something like this before until it kinda gains a little bit of steam, it has gained steam, we've created the structures, the meetings are happening, it's really going really well.
And the foundation of it is like self-reflection, right?
It's self-reflection, it's teacher empowerment, student assessment, so it's really about a few things. We wanna know, what do we want kids to know, what's really important? And then how do we know that they know, how to be assessed for those specific things and make those really things important? What are we gonna do when they know those things? Right, because, hey, we gotta extend them, what do we do when they don't know those things? That means that we're gonna have to use intervention time, which we built in this year's schedule that wasn't embedded before. And so that intervention time's for, you know, the teachers meet, they take a look at the data and they say, okay, you're gonna take those, those four, these four kids, cause they're doing really well. I'm gonna take these two kids, cause they're struggling with it, and then those two kids, I'm not sure what they know, you know, like they're having a hard time with this particular item, but somebody else is gonna take them. So it's a whole systematic, structurally, it's, we've made all the structural changes and now it's culturally we've been making those changes little by little. Nothing gets turned around that quick.
Right, you're gonna keep it, those give three goals, we're not changing those.
Oh, no.
Three parts.
Yeah, I mean, they're all, they all feed into our strategic plan, right? So, and then our, our district goals return to my, my goals, that you'll also see embedded in my evaluation.
Right.
And the Syracuse thing for the summer, it's the same group program, or is it something that you just look for a different one each year?
No, it's similar and I'm always focusing on who are the top tier people I want our people to see. And so when I call them, I'm like, I wanna know who's gonna be where, sometimes they don't tell you. So then I said, okay, get me in at Syracuse, please. This is close and it's got everybody I want them to see who will help change.
What's in that program again?
It's Solution Tree, PLC Institute. It's good.
We're gonna drive this school.
I'm gonna drive this school, no.
I'm carrying the song.
Yeah, so it's, I'm, I'm, it's really going well.
Okay, great, and I wanted one more other old business, I'm sorry, this was in the last meeting, but last meeting got a little full. So the Lake Como board bed, we were talking, it was a while ago, we were talking like years, two years ago. You guys, we were told that you guys had a discussion about hiring an attendance officer, I guess. To just, to find out, especially at high school, if anybody was going to Madison Square on our.
Yes.
Lake Como, Belmar.
Oh, you mean to have a state residency?
Yes, to have a state residency. And so, you know, we were, some of us were more behind than others and then we didn't hear anything about it. So then somebody asked, or you were asking.
Yeah, so we have, and we do have somebody on, that we, that we call when we feel like somebody's being elusive.
Right, there was gonna be, there was gonna be a whole roster, a whole roster check, right, Michael?
You're, so you're talking about having all the high school kids to like register or just to show proof of, of, or the proof of living in either Belmar or Lake Como. So we are starting that process.
Re-registration.
Yeah, so we originally were only doing eighth graders, like every year, like, so I talked about, at Seager, we did everybody. So like, we always thought it's a good idea just to do everybody, because at, at the cost of $20,000 for Madison Square's tuition, if you find one kid, that helps.
Pay for that.
Pay for a lot. Yeah, so that's what we're slowly trying to get, we don't wanna do it all at once, so I think this year, I think we were talking about doing two grades.
So we're targeting our current 10th graders going into 11th grade. Right, so that way there's two checkpoints, the current eighth graders are going to ninth grade and 10th graders going to 11th grade. We're gonna check residency there, because after that two-year lapse, something could have happened and changed and we wanna catch any changes. Where people might be driving from Brick or, or from wherever else deciding, hey, I wanna keep on going to Madison Square, I don't mind, my parents don't mind dropping me off. Or now I drive and I can just drive to school.
That happens all the time.
It does, and so we have to be aware of it. So we're always looking for return mail, we're always collaborating with the high school, if they feel like something's up. Our bus drivers play a big role in recognizing, hey, this student doesn't really drive the bus anymore, what's going on? There's quite a few, you know, tentacles we have out there, trying to figure out if people are living in town or not, to make sure.
Eighth grade and 10th grade.
But is there no, is there a reason why we wouldn't do all of this?
We could do the whole thing.
But cause it's literally getting them to submit their paperwork.
Right, it's just like they were in kindergarten.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we could do that.
I mean.
Are you saying every year, every year they would do that?
So.
The beginning of school?
Annual update. Yeah, just don't enter in the summertime, just to come in and just say, hey, I'm still living here, just showing you proof of address and that's it, that's all you have to do. We did it at Seager and there was, be shocked on how many people you could find.
I wouldn't be shocked, people stay all the time, this kid, he's 20 and said, it was his beach house, and he lives in Wall. He said, oh, I was gonna go to Madison Square because I have a beach house in Belmar, you know, I was, so.
Well, many people think if they picked taxes and here they can go there.
Right, which is gonna be my question, that's not the case, right?
They have to be downsized.
Right, like majority of the, yes.
Unless, it depends on if there's a custody agreement.
Of course, it's hard, it's hard, yeah.
If it's fifty, if the custody dead, lives here, or lives somewhere else, they can just, they can just.
And Madison Square does report that to us too, so just recently, we just had that happen to us.
Right, just for your advocate, why would Madison Square report that to us, they're gonna get the money.
I, I agree with you, but, but they do, they do report, report when they know of something.
Right, if, if it's a bad kid.
No, no. That's good, I need you to get him on the ropes now. So, I'll, I'll go through a process with Steph Kramer, cause she's someone that typically handles this, handles the residency people coming in.
I just wanted to follow it up.
We'll go through a process and maybe we can find a schedule that works for people to move their residency out this summer. This is all working beginning of summer, so.
Well, even if they didn't do it every year, but we did it at least once for a while and, you know, repeated as we could, because.
Yeah, I mean, and that's, that's why I was thinking my first step might be kids that are, this is gonna be the third year in high school. It could have been last year, they moved and now we're gonna, you know, right in the middle there. It's always tough when it's a senior and it's kinda like, you know, like, what do you do if you catch it too late? I'm not gonna hold the last two months of the year, but maybe, maybe it's worth doing something at that point as well. All right, I can, I can put some attention on that.
Any other old business? Any new business? Any comments from the public on any?
I'm good.
We have to act on it and then, we did have to act on it? Okay, so.
We just have to, yeah, we may have to.
Unless we do, okay, it has to be, all right, so we have a closed session and we may take action after, oh, wait. First before I go, okay, first before I go, then let's talk about the dates to remember, May 25th, the kindergarten show, May 26th, field day. May 29th, schools close Memorial Day, May 30th, the 31st is the eighth grade trip to Woodlock. June 1st is the pre-K show, June 14th is the DES eighth grade dance. June 16th is the DES eighth grade graduation and the last day of school. And June 22nd is our next board meeting and for board members, we will need to have an exec then to discuss superintendent evaluation. So if anybody hasn't completed, if you can, and between now and then, that would be helpful.
Anybody has an extra grab with me or Michael, we'll get them tagged this Friday.
Wonderful.